We ready, ladies?
I take the mic. I'm not sure if I have a mic, but maybe I do.
You ready?
Yep.
You're good enough.
Call the meeting total. Let the record show this is a regular city council meeting held on Monday, August 17th. All members of council are present with the exception of Mr. Kirby. The press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. And in your moment of silence, please remember T. Muhammad, who was the young man who passed away in the lake this past week, as well as the firefighters, the police officers, the York County Sheriff Dive Team, and all those guys who were involved in helping him as best Thank you very much. Item number one on the agenda is public comments.
No.
Are there any public comments?
That's where we go in executive session.
That's not... Sorry.
Oh, here.
Item number one on the agenda is an executive session. Counsel, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to section 30 dot 4 dot 70 A1 of the South Carolina Code to discuss contractual matters related to municipal court.
I have a motion by Dottie Hurst. Do I have a second? Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying we're saying aye. Aye. Before we go into executive session, Mr. Kirby is here. Counsel is back in open session while in executive session. Only the item on the agenda was discussed. No votes were taken other than return to open session. For the record, Sylvia, Chris Larson made the motion to come out, and Jen seconded the motion. Item number two on the agenda... Excuse me. Yeah, item number two on the agenda is public comments. I've got two agendas here that's screwing me up. Item number two on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? There being none, closed public comments. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of minutes from a regular city council meeting of July 20th, 2015, and a special city council meeting of August 3rd, 2015. Counsel, do you have any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number four on the agenda is the proclamation of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas every year thousands of children across America are diagnosed with cancer and often life-threatening illnesses, that remains the leading cause of death and disease for children under the age of 15. And whereas the cause of pediatric cancer is still largely unknown, and through new discoveries are resulting in new treatments, this heartbreaking disease continues to scar the families and communities in ways that they may never heal, fully heal. And whereas during the month of September, we remember that young lives taken too soon stand with the families facing childhood cancer today, and rededicate ourselves to combating this terrible illness. And whereas during the month of September, we pay tribute to the families, friends, professionals, and communities who have led their strength to childhood cancer... Child... Excuse me. To children fighting pediatric cancer. May their courage and commitment continue to move us forward, move us towards new cures, healthier outcomes, and brighter futures for America's youth. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the council of the city of Teguc, do hereby declare September 2015 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to join in reaffirming their commitment to fighting childhood cancer. Signed today, August 17th, by my hand. Item number 4B on the agenda is the oath of office of Stan Hutton. Stan, would you come to the podium there?
If you do me a favor, engage your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
Can exercise the duties.
Can exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
To help me God. To help me God. Congratulations.
Welcome. Congratulations. We're getting younger and younger.
Because we're not getting older.
No, I know we're not getting older, thank goodness.
Item number 4C on the agenda is the recognition of the Teguc sports teams. The team that's with us tonight is a... How can I say? State champion?
Woo-hoo!
Woo! Their head coach is Tom Homchick. Tom, would you step to the podium and announce your players?
Why don't we have a microphone?
All right, starting off is Matthew Curtis. Matthew's number 24. Number 13, Lanny Ross. Number seven, Benjamin Mills. Number two, Deuce Homchick.
Deuce! I love that!
Number 25, Johnny Wimmer. Number 10, Shane Deadmore. Number nine, Jager Hank House. Number eight, Cameron Dale. Number 11, Levi Donaldson. Number one, Zachary Jennings.
Woo-hoo!
Number five, Trevor Hanson.
Trying to be an American.
Number 44, Eli Cratt. Their pitching coach, Brian Downs. Their fielding and first baseman, Tommy Dagel.
Thank you. Good job.
And with us tonight is their hitting instructor and bench coach, Anthony Denver.
Thank you. Good job.
So, on behalf of the citizens of Teguc, we want to thank you very much.
Great job.
Good job.
Good job.
Please, if you guys would stay right there and do something different. Counsel, would you get in behind them so we can get some pictures?
Stand right here if you want, George.
Down there in the bottom.
Tom, give us a direction.
May I slide this in? George? If you're ready, you're welcome to it.
You know how I'm... You know what I'm about. I require my pants. Come on over here, Ron.
Everybody look this way. What do you need me to do?
Out of the picture.
Okay.
Where are you guys looking at? Very wooden, black one?
My tongue is out.
They might think we're selfless.
You guys all?
Thank you, guys.
We clean up. We clean up, okay.
It smells like chocolate.
I smell like chocolate, yeah.
You guys can go up here. Unless you really want to stay for the whole meeting, wouldn't you?
You won't.
And understand why. Have a good school year, guys.
Thank you.
They said with a lot of expression and excitement.
Well, it's excitement today. Tomorrow, it's not so much. Along with these guys, we had the Teguc Breakers, who are also champions. And we had, I think we had coaches pitch, did we not?
Coaches pitched one in the district, yes.
Yeah, there you go. Item number 4D on the agenda is the golf course budget. The fiscal year 2015-16 golf course budget.
I thought we were going to have... Wait, that's not...
That's 4.
It's on special presentation.
Yeah, 4D.
Right? 4D.
You know what? Same thing happened to me.
Yeah.
The numbers are a little... You're on. You're up. The numbers, just add one.
Oh, he's got the microphone. I was wondering where it was for all this other stuff we were doing.
I was following you a minute ago. I thought, what, he changed?
Can't trust these golfers.
You're good. Add one to your numbers.
Stealing microphones.
Can we take this?
Sure. We know where to find you.
Thank you all so much for having us tonight. That was neat, wasn't it?
It was.
That was really cool. The... First of all, before we kind of go through the general part of the summary of the budget, just want to say that we're really, really pleased with where we are overall, just facility-wide, asset-wide. We feel like it's... We're in a really good place. And so, every day our charge is to keep trying to get better and better. And so, the staff, and we'll recognize a couple of them in just a minute, but just wanted to say initially, we're really pleased. And you never know what the weather will hold, but we just take it day by day. What we tried to present tonight was a general overview in addition to what we had in your packets of where the golf course we feel like will be for the next fiscal year. With a general rounds and revenue budget of $33,268, which is up from our first year we were here, it was just around $27,000. So, it's grown nicely since that time, with $1,227,724 for revenue budget, $36.90 per round average. And that's important as we try to maintain, and our belief and our stride every day is to maintain the best overall value in the market with all of our pricing. And we will continue to do that. Our strategy for next year is a continued best-in-class, if you will, for the golf courses in this market, as well as the continued use of the free Teguc resident card, which gives a residence $3.00 off all regular rates and $1.00 off all other rates. And that's a free card you pick up in the golf shop anytime. And it's a wonderful program. And then the membership is really at the highest level that we've ever had since we've been here. And so, our opinion is to keep the base membership rates the same. We have a prepaid discount that we've had in place for a number of years, and we would like to, at least in this budget, is to reduce that discount somewhat, just to bring it back in line with industry averages. We've needed the prepay's for a long, long time to get through the winter months, and so we had a pretty strong discount to encourage that. And it's not that we don't need that, but we're just for the business improvement in general and our cash improvement, we're really good shape going into the wintertime. And so, we've reduced that discount a little bit on all the membership rates. But all the base rates are exactly the same. Again, the golf course experience, really it's the condition and customer service, guest experience while they're here. We put Josh Brownell and Chuck Smith's names in particular, although it's a whole team that are there, do a really, really wonderful job of a great condition and great service level while the golfers enjoy the Teguc golf course. So, we're really proud of that. Again, the marketing programs that we're going to continue on that work really well to expand our market share, again, that value experience, the social media's been tremendous. We did a Facebook post boost, I guess you will, on a picture of number 18 not too long ago that ended up with, I want to say almost 50,000 people saw it. We added a lot of new likes to the page, and it's really done remarkably well, as well as the Google search. If you search for Teguc or you search for golf courses in the Fort Mill area, Charlotte area, our ad's going to pop up. And for 2012, 13, 14, and 15, we have been voted the best course in the Fort Mill area, which we're extremely proud of.
Great.
We included within the budget a capital loan, two loans that we have existing that the golf course pays for, for golf course maintenance equipment and for utility cars. Both of those loans mature this year. We've added in this year's budget two additional loans to replace those two.
Oh, thank you.
For more, for golf course equipment and utility vehicles that, again, the golf course will pay for out of the operating budget. But we included that in there beginning in August... Well, we're beginning in June for the new budgets. We make the final payments in May and August for the existing ones. And as in past, when we take out a new loan, we may not have to make those payments to next fiscal year budget, but we include it in this year's just for security reasons. And those payments currently in this year's budget is the $155,000 that the golf course is able to pay for, for that equipment, which includes also the golf carts, golf course maintenance equipment, utility cars, which the budget and the operations paying for currently, and will continue to do that. And then obviously, continue to work with the city manager's office and council on long-range capital needs and programs as they develop. Quick rundown, just big numbers, is again, $33,268 rounds of golf, revenue of $1,227,724. Cost of goods sold is merchandise, when we buy merchandise for the shop and sell, and this is the cost of that, $72,000. We typically margin, we make about a 30% margin, 28 to 30 cent... 28 to 30% margin on those goods, so it's a nice profit center. Departmental expenses of a little over $400,000. Payroll taxes, employee benefits, which is health insurance, everything's included, is $540,000. Our fixed costs for general liability insurance and loan interest is $18,000. And then you see the loan principal payments for the carts, maintenance equipment, et cetera, $148,982, giving us a net cash flow of golf operations of $41,000. And the adjusted cash flow after the Plan B contract brings it down to $35,363 positive cash flow for the year. Business improvement, just a general, I think, overview of the facility. Again, we started around 27... 70 rounds. Now, we're over 33 and pushing 34,000 rounds of golf, which is great. First two years, the city subsidized the facility over $375,000 in operating funding. Now, we're above the 33,000 rounds. No operational subsidy has been needed for the last several years, which has really been great, although we've done a lot of things together, special projects, but it's really worked out well. We have a reserve established. Again, we're covering $155,000 in annual loan payments. And the 15-16 budget reflects, at least during our tenure, the highest rounds, revenue, and membership total that we've had since we've been here. So, we're really pleased with that, with where we are. Again, the number-one marketing driver really is the golf course and the genuine care of it. We included a few slides just to show you. This is a practice facility, which they've really done a great job of improving that area. Next slide is the... This was done on July 4th by our superintendent, Chuck Smith, and his son to paint an American flag out in the fairway, which was a huge hit. And just... It just shows the care of the team out there. It was a really neat thing for him to do, and we received a lot of great comments on it. So, it took him eight hours to do it. He and his son did it and just really enjoyed it. So, we're waiting to see what'll happen for Halloween. Next slide is the picture of 18. You can see he's looking backwards. This is the post that we boosted on Facebook that had just tremendous amount of comments, feedback, reached a lot of people of just how spectacular our golf course is and how spectacular Teguc is. And that's, at the end of the day, is what we're trying to get out. This was a project really in co-op with the city to put in stairs at number 18, landscape it with azaleas. The really goal is when you walk off number 18, have great experience. It's a beautiful reflection of the facility. So, we wanted to include that. And then next slide would be what we think is the best team in golf. Chuck Smith is not here today. He's at soccer game with his son. But Josh Brownell and Chuck Smith, who are just a tremendous team, do a great job every day. And we, as a management company, are could not be more honored to work with two individuals such as them. And Teguc is really fortunate to have them, and have done a great job for the facility.
Good job.
That's all I have. Have any questions?
I do. The total loan principal payments you have is $148,000 that we have here, but yet you mentioned right there. Go back one... Go there. Operating covered by 155 annual loan payments.
That's plus the interest gets to the 155. Principal is the 148. The interest is the additional amount.
Okay. And then last year, you started a program, Josh did, was the student program.
Yes.
That is not listed here. Is that something that you're planning to do next year as well?
We are. And Josh, we can give a... You want to give a quick up a date on that?
That would be great.
Please. Absolutely. This has been really great. And again, it's a building process. We absolutely plan on including that for next year.
Yeah, he looks like an old man. What's going on?
He is old. An old man. You'll see someday when he get to be my aide-ski.
Oh, thank you. Okay, guys, you get points for that.
The junior membership, Teguc junior membership, right now we've got 14 kids that are around the club, basically from sunup to sundown. It's in addition to the many junior programs that we do through Total Golf Adventures of Charlotte, with Champ Dedhamore and Kami Berher and company do some as well. The junior memberships actually sold this year, were six. We were testing the water. We want to make sure we don't inundate the cove with more play than we can handle. I feel like we'll probably get that number to about 25 to 30 members next year. The intent of the program is to give our youth a place to go, something to do, an introduction to golf regardless of their skill level, and really, to me, just a place to be. I remember being around the club as a young man, and the kids we have now, if you come around, you'll see that until today, when school started, you'd see the same 13, 14 kids there every day. So, it's a... I'd say six were sold. The other seven or eight are already members of a family membership.
That's great.
Introducing the program actually got us another family membership. So, and incidentally, Mr. Mayor, it was the same individual that helped us kind of provoke this program. So, successful in its first year. We only did it for half the year. So, and again, we just wanted to make sure with the number of cove rounds we get that we didn't inundate the cove with too much of this play, but the program would be successful for sure.
Oh, it's been nice to see, you know, the young guys walking along the cart path. And of course, they have to carry their clubs because they can't have a cart.
They can't drive, yes.
And yet, they still do it, you know? And I've seen them in the heat and, you know, pass it by my house.
Every Wednesday morning of the summer, I did a practice session and then a nine-hole playing session. So, we had 12 to... One day, we had 22 guys. Some were a little bit older, but for the most part, they were high school age.
Yeah.
And younger kids.
Yeah.
And we all played together. And I had enough older kids where we could drive the carts with them. So, it was a... We're building a team environment, and that's what I'm trying to... The point I'm trying to get across to the kids. So, it's been great.
That's great.
Really has been.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
No, sir. That was the only question, was the junior rates.
Okay. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good work.
Item number five on the agenda is the committee appointments. Ron, we've all passed our ballots over to Sylvia, so I think if she can tally those, we should be ready. Okay, perfect. So, that's building code of appeals, planning commission, and stormwater. Item number six on the agenda, under unfinished business, is the second reading of the ordinance regarding the Fifth Amendment, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before you the second reading of an ordinance to provide for the Fifth Amendment of the Gardendale Development Agreement. Counsel will recall, this amendment is just to extend the sunset period, or the sunset date of the development agreement, pushing it out from March 31st, 2016 to March 31st, 2018. We would ask for counsel's favorable approval at this time.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I'll go for it. Mr. Mayor and counsel, I motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance regarding the Fifth Amendment to the Gardendale Development Agreement.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby. I was seconded by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6B on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance to annex tax map number 6500101001, and to rezone it as Stonecrest PDD RHD. And we would ask for counsel's favorable approval at this time. Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I'll go for it. Mr. Mayor and counsel, I motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance regarding the Fifth Amendment to the Gardendale Development Agreement.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby. I was seconded by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6C on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance to annex Stonecrest PDD RHD. And we would ask for counsel's favorable approval at this time. Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I'll go for it. Mr. Mayor and counsel, I motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance regarding the Fifth Amendment to the Gardendale Development Agreement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have before you the second reading of an ordinance to provide for the Fifth Amendment of the Gardendale Development Agreement. Counsel will recall, this amendment is just to extend the sunset period, or the sunset date of the development agreement, pushing it out from March 31st, 2016 to March 31st, 2018. We would ask for counsel's favorable approval at this time.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I'll go for it. Mr. Mayor and counsel, I motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance regarding the Fifth Amendment to the Gardendale Development Agreement.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby. I was seconded by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6C on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance to annex tax map number 6500101001, and to rezone it as Stonecrest PDD RHD. And we would ask for counsel's favorable approval at this time. Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to annex tax map 6500101001, and rezone as Stonecrest PDD to RHD.
I have a motion by Chris Lambic Larson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any counsel discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6C on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance to annex Stonecrest PDD, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, before you tonight is the second reading of an ordinance for the same parcel number to be brought in as part of... To amend the Stonecrest PDD and make the aforementioned parcel number a part of that master plan and rezone as Stonecrest PDD RHD. As counsel has already given favorable first read on this item at your last regular scheduled meeting, we would ask for a favorable second at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members...
Go ahead, Jen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend the Stonecrest PDD to include tax map number 6500101001, and to rezone that parcel as Stonecrest PDD to RHD.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford, and I have a second by Ron Kirby. Any further counsel discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 7A on the agenda is the introduction of the first reading of the ordinance for for fiscal year 2015-16 general fund budget, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do want to let you know, and for the public's knowledge, the public hearing for this will be scheduled prior to second read at our September 21st meeting. We had sent in the advertisement to the Herald that is required for the public hearing. For whatever reason, they did not run it in time, so we decided to delay the public hearing, which is fine, just moved it back to September 21st. So that's why we didn't have a public hearing and budget presentation at the beginning of tonight's meeting, but we will have that and ready to go for your September meeting. As the mayor alluded to, this item before you is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016 general fund budget in the amount of $7,562,377. It also, for the public certification, this budget does not envision a tax increase in keeping the millage rate at 89 mills, as it currently is and has been for the last couple of years. At this time, we'd ask for counsel's favorable review of this.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016 general fund budget in the amount of $7,562,377.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any counsel discussion? There be, when you do in the public, when we do the public hearing in September, you're going to show us everything up on the screen?
Yes, sir.
And all that stuff, okay.
Yes, sir.
Call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven B on the agenda is the storm, excuse me, the swim team, excuse me, beach and swim center budget, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, tonight before you is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance for the fiscal year 2015-2016 beach and swim center budget in the amount of $214,969. This is an enterprise budget, therefore, it is solely supported by membership fees as well as ancillary items such as swim team, club rentals, miscellaneous revenue items such as that, and we would ask for counsel's favorable read at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Chris, do you have a question?
No, sir, I don't have it in front of me. Mr. Mayor and council, I motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016 beach and swim center budget in the amount of $214,969.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven C on the agenda is the TKD 1 and 2 budgets for fiscal year 2015-16, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight before you is introduction, first reading of an ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016, TKU Utility Department Budget. This is a combined budget of TKD 1 and TKD 2 in the amount of $3,575,141. It does not, this budget does not have any rate increases over what they are currently. We would ask for counsel's favorable review at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016 TKU Utility Department Budget in the amount of $3,575,141.
Motion by Chris Lambic Larson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hershey. Any counsel discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven D on the agenda is the stormwater budget for 2015-16, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This budget is in the amount of $461,171 for our stormwater budget. It does include or envision a increase on the stormwater rate from $96 per ERU to $108 per ERU. That will be for residential and for commercial, actually, it's a dollar a month, it's a $12 increase, and we would ask for counsel's favorable review at this time.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve introduction and first reading of an ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016 stormwater budget in the amount of $461,171.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hershey. Any counsel discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number six E on the agenda is the introduction of the 2015-16 community events budget, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, an ordinance for the community events hospitality tax and capital projects budgets. We've got all three of those funds covered under one ordinance, but they are three separate budgets. Your community events budget in the amount of $80,120. Hospitality tax budget in the amount of $150,000, and capital projects for $949,665. Your community events budget is pretty self-explanatory, Fourth of July, fall festival, concerts, things of that nature. Your hospitality tax budget is to provide for the accounting of funds brought in through H-Tax, and it's been nice to watch that fund steadily grow each year, so good on our food and beverage businesses there. Capital projects is a new budget to start accounting for, providing an accounting mechanism for some of these projects like Catawba Park, and this year, replacement of the lights, the Buffalo Lights at Runde Park, and hopefully, very soon, the fire department budget, or building the new fire department. So we would ask for counsel's favorable review at this time.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016 community events budget in the amount of $80,120. Hospitality tax budget in the amount of $150,000, and capital projects budget in the amount of $949,665.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any counsel discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number six F on the agenda, under new business, is the York County Stormwater Collection Service, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If you'll recall, several months ago, brought this to your attention, now we need to put it in play. Several years ago, when York County agreed to start collecting the residential stormwater fees for us, they initially told us that there would be a charge for it. Up to this point, they have not charged us any of the setup fee or anything that they had to do on the tax bill software and whatnot. They've been collecting the funds and then remitting them back to the city. Received notification several months ago that they're now going to start implementing a 55 cent per fee collected for us. Basically covers the cost of postage and the check printing. We did include, we did include this amount in the stormwater budget that you just gave first read to, and we would ask for counsel's favorable review at this time on this agreement.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor and council, I motion to approve the York County Stormwater Service Charges Collection Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion?
Yeah, can you negotiate that just a little bit?
I'll work on the county manager and see if we can get it down.
Call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number seven G on the agenda is the Fort Mill School District Resource Officer Agreement, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a renewal of the same agreement that the city has had ever since we annexed in Gold Hill Middle and Gold Hill Elementary Schools. While we do provide an officer liaison that splits time at the two elementary schools, they're not technically an SRO position. The SRO officer is stationed 100% of the time at Gold Hill Middle School during school hours, and this agreement, again, is a renewal of agreement that y'all seen in the past, where they reimburse us 50% of his salaries and benefits for working there. When school's not in session, we're utilizing him on boat patrol and other assets within our police department.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Fort Mill School District Resource Officer Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the said agreement.
Motion by Chris Lambic Larson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hershey. Any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Seven H, electronic meeting attendance, City Manager Charlie Funderburk.
No, sir, I'm gonna let y'all have those.
Well, Dottie, you asked the question of all of us, so we'll start it off with you.
Yeah, this was, I guess, a question I asked a couple of years back, and I decided that it should resurface this year, and just asked again if there was a mechanism that was in place, well, not in place, but one that we could put in place, to permit city council members on, only on a really as-needed basis, if they're away on travel, or they have a personal illness and absolutely can't get to the meeting, but would like to participate and hear the citizens' concerns and issues, and have a chance to vote on issues and so forth. If there was a way that we could have a telephonic setup here in council chambers to permit that to happen. As I understand it, and I guess the city manager will talk a little bit about what his findings are in terms of exploring other municipalities in the area and what they may or may not be doing. And again, if this even goes forward at all, the idea is, and I'm sure all my, certainly myself, and I assume my fellow council members agree, that this is really on an emergency exception basis, that's obviously not to become the routine, and none of us are going to say, gee whiz, I think I'll just stay home tonight and call in because I can't make it around the corner. It's not with that in mind, and certainly in my case, what it has been is that sometimes I have business trips that I can't schedule around, and I feel terrible when I have to miss a meeting because you voted for me to be here to listen to your concerns and vote and so forth, and when I can't be here, it troubles me greatly, but sometimes we don't have a choice. So this is a mechanism in place to perhaps help us if we run into that problem from time to time.
Okay. Jen, any comments?
We want to hear from. What Charlie had to say.
Just want to hear what he learned, what he found out. I mean, I.
Basically, we've got a attorney general's opinion on the matter, and if you look closely at the opinion that he wrote back in 2005, and then look at the rules that the city of Rock Hill adopted, they're about the almost exact same thing.
Yeah, pretty much.
For the public, I will say, if counsel were to move forward with this, yeah, Rock Hill's got, I think, fair and reasonable rules around it. You have to inform the city manager in writing, they say no later than three hours before the meeting. I think if you're going to be out of town on business, I think you would know much further in advance, but if the member of council is absent due to illness, they got to include a statement basically saying that they've not been advised by their doctor, that they're not.
Mentally incompetent.
Mentally incompetent to make legal decisions. That was a much better way than what I was going to say, so thank you.
You're welcome.
A quorum of council members has to be physically present, so you couldn't have four wanting to phone in and just me and the mayor, me and Chris sitting here in the room by ourselves. The members attending by teleconference must be able to hear any and all comments made by public staff or other council members, and likewise, everybody, all the rest of council staff and the public have got to be able to hear comments from the person that's phoning in. The person that's presiding over the meeting must be physically present during the meeting, so the mayor, mayor pro tem would have to, one of the two would have to be here. The, let's see, other than establishing the telephone connections, there can't be any other communications between the members that are attending by telephone or a member that's here, so no texting back and forth with the person that's not here. All the comments, motions, and votes of the members attending telephonically must be capable of being recorded in the minutes of the meeting. In the event the mayor or other, or other members of council abuses the privilege of attending meetings by telephone, a majority of members of council may vote to discontinue such privilege for that person. So that's basically how Rock Hill does it, they've only had to use it once or twice, from what they've told me. Malden's, and after reading their rules, which they're the only two cities that responded back, saying they actually had rules in place for this, after reading Malden's rules, I can understand why nobody has used theirs yet. Basically, the council member that's absent that's wanting to phone in has to provide all the technology to be able to do so. So they've got to set all that up for everybody else, it's not something that's provided for them. Again, Rock Hill's, Rock Hill's rules pretty much follow what the, almost verbatim, what the attorney general's opinion was on the matter back in 2005. Counsel, I did send y'all a memo earlier today that does talk, and do y'all have copies of the memo with you?
Yes.
I don't have it with me, but I read it.
Installation of a phone line to be, you know, up behind the dais, one time, $144. Monthly charge of $43.88, which, if my math serves me well, on my calculator here, that's about $526 per year on that, and then another $9.95 if we wanted to add in the caller ID. That's what your, that's what your cost is looking at to do the installation if council decides to move forward. I would strongly suggest that if council does want to move forward, we could bring something back at your next meeting, as far as an actual written amendment to your, the rules that were adopted by, your local rules that were adopted some time ago. We could bring that in a more formal resolution-type format for council to consider at your next meeting, if you want to move forward, whether it's with Rock Hill's rules that they've adopted, if you want to just follow only what the attorney general has said, yeah, we'll take our lead from council.
Ron?
This goes way back, Bob McClellan will remember. I had my first meeting as a member of council, September 2004, it's not the first meeting, but the third or fourth meeting, and I was in a hospital bed, so I didn't have any choice. I didn't advocate it being a practice of council to do this, I know the people elect you to be here and be present. At the same time, I know that council's committed to do right things, and they want to be a part, and it's unfortunate when they can't due to other obligations. I would like to see us go forward with this, absolutely not, not an executive session, it couldn't happen because of no way to screen it. The attorney general, then, we went back and forth with the attorney general, Bob will remember this, and there was a lot of opinions, no real clarity in my, from where I was coming from, but I'd like to see us give our city manager, mayor, some opinions, via email from each of us. I'd like to see us go forward and pursue this with the rules and set our own rules around what we've seen from the other cities.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, I don't think we've had enough time, I haven't had enough time to explore all the avenues of this venture, considering it's on our agenda tonight and we're discussing it in public, but haven't had the opportunity to discuss it with the city manager. It says dedicated phone lines, I guess it was 500 some odd dollars for the year. What about the microphones and the speaker, you know, whatever you're going to require to hear, they can hear on the other side, how does that work? I mean, we're talking into this thing, it's coming out of a speaker, well, mine isn't coming out of a speaker, but I, I mean, how are they going to hear it on a, what do you put it?
We'd have a microphone next to the speakerphone, and they should be, they should be able to hear back through the speakerphone what's being projected.
You would need the handset next to the speaker, so someone can hear it on the other end.
We can work out that part, I mean, that.
Well, how do you do that? I mean, what do you?
Well, you've got speakers right over top of you.
Do you put a handset up there?
No, you'd have them on speakerphone, they'd be able to hear it.
They can hear it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. They'll hear everything, okay. An executive session is a concern of mine as well.
Right.
That's a big part of our meetings, and it carries.
My recommendation was, would be that you're not doing executive sessions at all.
Obviously not, yeah, so, I mean, we carry from that room into here a lot of times, and they wouldn't be part of that. And we're going to be doing it twice tonight, and we vote on things accordingly out of executive session, so. But I'd like to go, you know, look into this as well, I'd like to see that, and I care if it's Dottie or anybody here that has an interest of, I like the fact that they're interested in participating, even though, I mean, they, their hands are tied, so, I mean, it might happen to me, it might happen to any one of us, where you get that opportunity to at least partake, and I agree with it, so. As far as going forward with it, I don't know what we're going to do, you, Mr. Mayor, or.
Well, I think we should.
How we would do that.
What Jen and myself have to say.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we can take it from there. Jen?
Well, I definitely have the concern regarding executive session not being able to participate that in that, because sometimes that helps us, like, right now. That was another concern, is actually the clarity of being able to be heard. After the last presentation of the stormwater updates, we, I had a lot of people contact me, even though that was televised, and a lot of people said they couldn't hear. So I think it's, I actually do that for a board that I'm on, I participate by phone, and there's a lot of times I can't hear everything, and I'll have to interrupt. So I am concerned about the clarity of being able, like, tonight, we couldn't hear anything, for example, that that man was saying, that the coach, about the children, he didn't have a microphone. So that would be a concern, but I'm not completely opposed to it. I think one concern is going forward, we all trust each other not to abuse this kind of policy, and of course, we'd have guidelines like we're describing, but what's to say this new council members that, I don't know, there could be abuse in hand, so it's just a concern.
Thank you. My concern, as well as everybody here, is what I'm hearing is the executive sessions. Rock Hill's does not cover executive sessions and whether or not executive sessions should be involved, I don't think that that should be part of a call-in teleconference. You should not be able to call into a executive session. The other thing that concerns me is that, down in the municipal association, I asked the question of a handful of mayors, and point-blank said to them about electronic meetings, and granted, their councils may be, trying to find the politically correct word, and I'm not going to be able to find it, but they may be older and retired, so they don't have to work full-time jobs, so they can attend council meetings when they have to, they're not traveling as much. But they, all five of them said the same thing, that you're elected to be here, for the people to see you vote, see the people raise your hand. One of them went so far as to say that the United States Congress Um, one of them went so far as, um, to say that the United States Congress doesn't do it. Um, why should, why should a municipality do it? Which, you know, okay. Um, they also said that Columbia doesn't do it. Sometimes I wish Columbia wouldn't show up, but that's another story. But, you know, so, uh, I'm conflicted with it. Um, I do it business-wise. Um, I, I work out of an office in Charlotte. My main office is in New York. Um, when there's a, a conference call that I have to be on, I'm on a conference call in Charlotte. Um, but that's different. That's landlines. It's, you know, landline calling a landline. Um, so there's less chance of that being screwed up or, or not being able to go through. So I, I'm conflicted about it. Um, I don't really think that executive sessions are, um, should be allowed. I, I think we've said that. Um, I also would like to see us put a, put a, a limit on it. Um, it says here, you know, when, when council feels, um, you know, council could feel that for one council member, it's three meetings, and for another council member, it's five meetings. Let's, let's cut that out and let's do exactly what it is. Should it be three meetings? You miss three meetings, you're not allowed to participate, um, in a confer, in a, in a conference call. Um, I think we should determine what that number is, not based on feelings. Now, as far as, I, I think Charlie has, um, some good ideas, um, from council. If council wants to add any more ideas, um, for Charlie on this issue, um, feel free to, to contact him. Um, and I think Charlie, you could probably send another memo out, um, to us prior to our September meeting, um, as to what, you know, council feels, and then if a majority of council feels that it should be on the agenda, then we put it on the agenda for September. If not, we move it out till October. But I think at this point, it, we're, we're, we're going on, on, on uncharted territory. Um, I'm not afraid of doing that, but I just don't wanna make a, a mistake, and I don't want the citizens to think that we're just calling it in, so to speak. Um, and I don't think any of us would do that, um, but I, I just don't want that perception out there, in my opinion. Anyone have anything to say against that or for that, or are we good with the discussion?
So I assume you're gonna, you're gonna send us something. How are we gonna send you, provide you with individual direction?
I, I, I think what it is, is that council should be sending you, um, their comments on, on these, the Rock Hill open session, and, and I guess the Malden open session, review what they think about it, um, or have a conversation with you about it, um, and then ask you to come back to us, um, if a majority of council thinks it should be on the agenda for September to discuss. Does that work?
That works for me. I think it's great.
Yeah, as you're, as you're speaking, there is, yeah, I'm getting a little bit more, you know, involved with this. There should be a limit on how many times, and I think we, I think we're gonna need some more discussion with it, obviously, and, and more input with you or FaceTime with you, Charlie. Uh, I'm still not, I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure that, that you are not declared, I, I made a joke about putting the handset to the thing, but you're not gonna hear this over a speakerphone. Jen, you said you, you did, you missed some of the meeting and. We gotta, we gotta come up with something to go, to, to, uh, battle those obstacles when we, we face them. And we'll, we could discuss that, Charlie.
We, uh.
If you have any ideas about that.
Since you missed it, one more thing, and I'll ask Bob McCleve. We, we discussed Skype before, that you had to be, we had to see that it was a person. Remember when we've got a deep discussion of?
Who do you think it is that's calling into these meetings, really?
Yeah, I, I'm.
I mean, I understand executive session, obviously, but I, I mean, the whole purpose behind this is so that the city council member can be here, and of course, these city, these meetings are public, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
If you see my face or not, because.
Well, we wanna see you raise your hand.
Well, I know, and I know you missed me and you like to see my face, but, um, you know, I mean, this is twenty fifteen. And, you know, and again, maybe I'm the person that has the most compelling, perhaps, need for this, although actually before the summer, I probably hadn't missed a meeting in a year. Um, so it doesn't happen often, but the fact that I was out for June and July because of a b, a business need and really couldn't avoid it, just brought the thought back into my head again, and, you know, people may believe it or not believe it, but, and I think my fellow council members are alike me in this, is that it really does bother me, and I think it bothers them, if they can't be here. I mean, that is what we were elected to do, but the point is, from my perspective, isn't it better that I can be on the phone? That I can listen, that I can make a comment, that I can vote, as opposed to nothing? That's, that's my way of thinking about it. And, you know, whatever way it goes, it goes. Um, you know, we've been surviving all along without it, but the times have changed some. And we aren't all retired or more senior, or however you put it, mayor. Um, and, and it's not just because you have to travel for business. Um, some of us have been ill from time to time. As Ron talked about, you know, his second or third meeting, he was in a hospital, and maybe he would've been able to be part of a meeting, maybe wouldn't, depending on how sick somebody is. But we also have illnesses in our family that take us out of town from time to time, things like that, where we don't really wanna miss. You know, when you had your, uh, ankle operated on or your foot, mayor, um, the fact that you came to the meeting that week was more than heroic. And honestly, from my, you know, my non-medical opinion is that you should've been home with your foot up or whatever you were supposed to do, instead of being here, but you came, and I think everybody appreciates it. But sometimes we have to do what's, you know, right for, you know, other reasons. Anyhow, I mean, off the soapbox, I just brought it up because I thought it was worth discussing again, and if the majority rules that it's not, then we keep going as we are, and if there's an opportunity to try it. The bad side is, I hate for us to go to any expense, even a small one, for it to fail. But I don't think there's an issue of anybody on this council abusing it. I think, I know my fellow council members well enough. And Jen, you know, to your comment in that regard, if we do move forward with these rules or some rules, it also says that if there is an abuse, then a council decides that we either terminate the process altogether or that we terminate it for the person who's abusing it. So I do think there's a remedy if we got to that.
Right, but, but I, again, I would like a clear remedy on that.
Uh, no, I agree.
I'm not, I'm not. And, and the other thing is, you know, Jen alluded to it, and I've gotten emails on it, I've gotten phone calls, that sometimes the clarity on the, on, from our council meetings at home, um, listening to the television, i- it's not that great. The volume is, you gotta turn the volume all the way up or whatever. Um, so we are hearing that as well, so I think that's something, uh, we need to take that into consideration.
True.
A, a, as well, as part of that.
Absolutely.
Um, I think we beat that to the death. Um, item number seven, I, which is the municipal judge agreement. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, this item before you tonight is a employment agreement, um, with, um, Mr. Justin Bice, uh, to become the city's municipal judge, effective upon the execution of said contract. Uh, we would ask for council's favorable consideration.
Okay. Council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to have the city manager enter into a contract with, no, enter into an employment agreement with Justin Bice to be the municipal judge for the city of Tika K.
Second.
Is that okay, Bob?
I have a motion by Dottie Hirst. I have a second by Ron Kirby. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number, um, nine on the, yeah, seven on, see.
I don't know.
Number eight on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, I'll be brief. First and foremost, congratulations to all the students who started school today, uh, Fort Mill. Uh, and to the seniors out there, buckle down. You're one step closer to the finish line. We'd like to welcome back, uh, Tim Gillette, who's back in his, uh, his cave back there. He, uh, came back with us today, uh, working part-time for the next few weeks, as he, uh, still recovers from having heart surgery. Uh, as the mayor, um, iterated, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, would like to thank, um, York County Sheriff's Department and the, uh, York County Sheriff's Dive Team, TK Police Department, TK Fire Department, and, um, South Carolina, uh, DNR uh, for their assistance, um, with the, uh, with, uh, T. Muhammad, who tragically drowned last week, um, off the point of, um, of, uh, Windjammer Park. Council, please make sure to review the, uh, pro, the proposed revisions, uh, that we've put in Dropbox for you of ordinance seventy-seven and ordinance fifty. Um, we have scheduled a public hearing and, um, uh, proposed first read, uh, at your September twenty-first meeting. Um, these have been discussed at length with staff, as well as with, uh, the planning commission. Uh, I'd like to thank Susan Britt for her hard work, and, uh, would like to thank the planning commission, uh, for their input as well through that process. Our next concert is this Saturday at Rundy Park. Uh, we look forward to seeing everybody out there for that. Um, and the tally of your ballots for the open committee positions, uh, for the building codes, uh, appeals board. Uh, we have four vacancies, and you've got Robert Miller, David Hip, Bart, is it Dyer? Dyer, and Chuck Reitz, um, added to that, uh, added to that group, so we appreciate that. Chris Leonard for, uh, planning commission. Uh, they have one vacancy, so that fills, uh, that, that group out. Um, and then we had four vacancies for stormwater, and we've got three people that applied, um, that were voted in as, um, I can't read that, Amy. Amy Benison, Rich Miller, and James, and I'm not, Aranye? Aranye? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name. Uh, but we definitely appreciate those people applying and, uh, look forward to them, uh, serving on those committees. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Charlie, how do those people get notified that they're on the committee?
Sylvia will, will notify them and then we'll arrange to get with you.
And those who fill out an application and they were not selected, how do they get notified?
Same way.
In that letter that Sylvia sends out, can she please mention that we have new openings coming up? Uh, because there are new opening people who are planning commission and so on and so forth, and David Hip, who went, who was on the CRC committee, is now on building code appeals, so we now have an opening on the CRC. So if we can inform people of that, and then also blast it out like we did last time.
Most certainly.
Thank you. Um, item number nine on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing none?
Nope, nope.
Oh, there we go.
Too quick.
Executive session. So if you'd state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Sure. I'm, uh, Bill Morgan. I don't know whether this is on or not. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we can.
All right. Bill Morgan, I'm at, uh, thirty-twelve Point Clear Drive here in Tika K. My neighbors and I, several months ago, purchased waterfront property, which is now silt front property. Our concern is that this area was initially dredged out, but has accumulated a great deal of silt again. It comes through a corrugated pipe that runs into the end of the cove where we are. It comes off of city property, which means that's the city's land that's now sitting in front of my dock. I would like to get that out of there. I would love for the city to go in and, and dig it all out. I understand that that's probably not within your jurisdiction. I understand that the lake belongs to Duke Energy, and I've talked with Kermit Taylor to the point where we're on a first-name basis now. What I would like to request is that you help us, myself, my next-door neighbor, and at least one other, possibly two others of our neighbors, to get the permit process run through, to get, uh, a place where we can deposit that silt, the buffer area right around there, with, of course, appropriate silt fencing and keeping it away from washing back into the area where we've just taken it out of. We're willing to get in there and get dirty and get the equipment to do the job, but we need help. We need your help in order to move the process along. I know that from talking to Kermit, March, April, May and June, you can do nothing, because that's the fish hatching season. So between now and March, we would like to get in there and get that cleared out. So I would ask for your help in doing that. We'd love to have you jump in there and do it. We talked to one company, Lake Norman Dock and Dredge, and they said to clean that out, it would be somewhere between ninety and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That is not anywhere near what our neighbors and us can do. So I've talked to a couple of different companies about the possibility of getting some equipment that allow us to get in there and do that, to, to get it out. But we gotta have a place to put it, and we need help to get it done. I'd love to have the city's help in, in getting in there and moving it out, but if that's not a possibility, whatever you can do to help us would be greatly appreciated. If you'd like to contract the pros and get them to do that, we would give you a standing ovation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Would, would you do me a favor, please? Make sure that the city manager has your information.
Okay.
Contact info.
Your contact information.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, are there any other public comments? There being none, closed public comments. Item number ten on the agenda is, um, council comments. I think it's ten.
What's next? The next item?
I don't know how I got two agendas. I don't, different.
Well, the paper's not jiving with what's on the.
Yeah, okay. Dottie?
Um, no, I don't have too many comments. I mean, first, of course, I'd like to express my sympathies, uh, to the Muhammad family. Um, I don't think there are really any words to express, um, you know, to, to make you, to make them feel better at all. It's a tragic, terrible loss, and, uh, um, my heart goes out to them for sure, and my prayers are with them as well. On a, on a happier note, I wanna say it's great to see Tim Gillette back in the city. And, uh, I hope he doesn't overdo it too much, but, uh, we missed you, Tim, and we're happy to see you back and, uh, well on the road to recovery. And I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, Dottie. Ron?
Uh, well, not much to add to that, other than our, our heart is out to T.'s family and, uh, also to the public safety. All of those agencies involved in the, in the situation. It's very sad. Also, we're very proud of all Tika K athletics, particularly the young men we're here tonight, and so proud we hear about Tika K. So many ways, it's, makes you proud, very proud to live here, but we've always, our athletics is, for our youth is awesome. And we appreciate the parents who give the time for that. I and Tim, we're glad to have you back and appreciate your staff and what they've done picking up the pieces in your absence.
Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate as well for the T. Muhammad family, um, and also to thank the ski team for their participation in raising money for his family as well. I think that was an outstanding, uh, thing that they did for, for them. And, um, also that the kids are in school. I guess today was their first day, yes. It's nice to see them riding their little bikes down there. Um, so be careful. Watch them, watch for them, and I hope they all have a great year. And the parents should be happy now that they're back in school. Always made me sad, but some parents like it. I didn't. But anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Jen?
A lot of things, same things to share, but, um, I guess going off what Chris was saying about school, I appreciate that the police department had someone out there today to remind people to slow down. But it's unfortunate that we have to have someone out there. We all know it's a school zone, and, um, can't afford for a child to be hurt and to go through. People were actually complaining to me today already about people not obeying the crosswalk person. That's getting our children across safely. I wanted, I, I'm looking forward to the presentation during the next council meeting, and I think everyone will be very pleased regarding the budget. And, um, uh, one thing that was really great is removing one of my pet peeves, other expenses, and actually itemizing what that is. And Bob, you always, great job, um, and as well as all the staff who worked on it. I was really encouraged by all the volunteers that came forth wanting to serve on a committee after it was blasted out. That was really fantastic. Um, and we had a lot of great quality people who came forward and just not enough positions this time. There are several coming open in March, so it's great that'll be included in the letter. And this Saturday, Charlie was talking about the last city concert, and, um, beautification will be selling t-shirts and sweatshirts to raise money for the maintenance of the Living Moremore Gardens. Um, so if you'd like to grab one, that's your last chance, uh, in a public venue.
Thank you, Jen. Um, I remember as a kid that we used to have bumper stickers on the cars that, that said, "School's open, drive carefully." So I'm gonna reiterate that. I, it was a little bit of a challenge for me this morning. Well, a couple of things, if you know me, any morning's a challenge. But coming back from vacation and then dealing with the. dealing with the, the school, it was, it was, patience is needed, so please have your patience when you go out in the morning, um, because we're, we're, we're running through it.